Yes, we can. We need, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We need a motion to move out of executive session, please.
So moved.
And second? By. Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our first order of business would be to alter the agenda. We need to add Carmen's superintendent's report as the first item under new business. Okay. And moving into a motion to accept the alteration, please.
So moved.
By Linda in a second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have Dan White, Superintendent of Monroe One BOSEs, and Tom Nispeca, Monroe One BOSEs and former celebrated Webster Board of Education member. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Twice in one year, actually twice in two months, so it's a good, thank you for having me back, having us back. Very briefly, want to say thank you. I was here, I believe, in February and talking a bit about our capital project that we had been proposing to the districts. Want to thank you sincerely for Webster's support on that. I know you took a tour and you had an opportunity to see some of the facilities and areas that needed upgrading and things that we're going to do for our students, your students, I should say. So we're appreciative of that. I want to thank Superintendent Camino. Carmen sits on our management steering committee, and that is the committee made up of our component district personnel that helps us vet all of our capital and financial work that we do on a yearly basis. So it's important that we involve our components in that, and they're really involved from the inception of all those plans and projects. Our administrative budget is up for your consideration, as you know. Again, thanks to Superintendent Camino, that is, that committee works with us as we develop that administrative budget really from its inception, I think, as you know. Proud to say that seventh year in a row, that is either lower or at least flat. So this year, it's slightly lower. We do work hard as we can to try and keep those, to keep that budget down, and thanks to the work of our component superintendents and business officials on that committee that really help us work through every budget. So it's really collaborative effort, as it should be, because we are cooperative, as you know. So thank you for that, and I'm, as always, very appreciative of the partnership for this Board of Education and this administration at Webster. And then Tom's going to talk to you a little bit about the video that we're going to show you tonight.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
Also, I'd like to extend my thanks for the work that you did in your legislative efforts around TRS and also the ability to get Dan a raise after his 2003.
Miracles never cease.
Yes. I've been involved with Legislative Committee since 1999, I think it was my first year on it, in Monroe County, and continue to do that work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, and some of you remember how long it took us to get from 2% to 4% on the unappropriated fund balance. We had to have the same fight for the TRS and that, and also the district superintendents to do them their proper due. The video that we're going to see tonight, if you haven't been able to take the tour, and those that were able to go, I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you, but something jumped in my way like another car, and I wasn't able to make it. But anyway, you're going to see a little video this evening that explains some of the services that are provided from BOSEs. The board talked with Dan and with our folks in our PR department that said, you know, we'd like to have something that we could present to the districts because a lot of you are working, don't have the time during the day to be able to come to BOSEs and make a visit, so let's bring BOSEs to you. So those that were able to come and see it in person, thank you. You probably learned a lot, and probably got a little choked up at times, too, with some of the things you saw that have to be done there to help some of the students that need the most help. So without further ado, I'll let you see this video.
It's great to see yourself on the screen. Sorry. Hi, I'm Dan White, District Superintendent at Monroe One BOSEs. We created this short video tour so that you can see some of the things that we offer students here at Monroe One. When students come to attend our programs, they work on the New York State learning standards, they prepare for college and career, and they learn how to become productive members of their community and society.
Over the past 60 years, Monroe One has evolved to meet the needs of the greater Rochester area. Offering 17 high school-level career and technical programs, your students will leave our Eastern Monroe Career Center, ready to transition to college or go directly into competitive employment. They will have learned to become responsible team members with a strong work ethic and desire to further develop their critical thinking skills. Children with disabilities have a tremendous ability to learn. They just learn differently. At Monroe One, we offer a full range of rigorous special education programs and services to the children in your community. Our special education programs and services offer school districts cost-effective options that meet all the regulatory requirements and expand the educational options available to the students in your districts. A full range of services and programs are offered for over 675 students ages 3 through 21. Programs range from fully inclusive to center-based schools. Instructional programs offer opportunities for groupings based upon students' educational, physical, and management needs.
Byrd Morgan School, located in East Rochester, serves 145 special education students in kindergarten through 8th grade. Programs provide students with the engaging instruction and emotional support they need to realize their potential as learners and members of the community. The school team collaborates daily to cultivate instructional and therapeutic approaches that best meet the diverse needs of students. Creekside School is a center-based program serving 300 students with multiple disabilities ages 5 through 21. Within the 1214 self-contained setting, students develop academic, communication, daily living, and social skills that will provide the foundation for lifelong success. Creekside uses a multidisciplinary, collaborative approach for developing individualized programs in core subject areas as well as pro-social skills, functional communication, and adaptive living skills. Students also benefit from the community-based instruction and a variety of life skills activities. The Eastern Monroe Career Center offers career training for over 700 high school students to prepare for workplace careers in fields such as construction, professional health services, laboratory technician, computer repair, culinary arts, and emergency services to precision manufacturing and welding. Our students are well-prepared for work, college, or post-secondary training, and enter the real world with hands-on experience and specific skills required to make an impact on the very first day on the job. The multi-occupational and focus programs are primarily for over 220 high school students with special needs. Students have the opportunity to develop the skills and attitudes they will need to succeed in work and life after high school. O'Connor Academy is a small, structured 611 special education program for over 90 high school students in grades 9 through 12. Students are provided all the necessary requirements to achieve a New York State Regents or local diploma and/or a CDOs credential. They are also eligible to participate in career and technical education classes or in a vocational program on campus. Project Search is a partnership with Wegmans, who provides employment training, and Monroe One BOSEs, who provides education to students with developmental disabilities in their last year of school eligibility to prepare them for competitive employment. Transition Opportunities at the University of Rochester, or TOUR, is a college program serving 24 students ages 18 through 21 with intellectual disabilities. Students work towards completing their portfolio, which includes taking college classes and participating in college clubs and activities. Estart is a 9th through 12th program designed for students with average to above-average academic skills. Estart is a 611 collaboration with Hillside Children's Center, located in the Carlton Webster Building in Henrietta. The program provides an academic setting with the support of Hillside clinicians to meet students' needs. Students and families continue to access community supports for their psychiatric care and management. Transition programs are designed for students 18 through 21 years of age with multiple challenges. Instructional emphasis is placed on the development of skills at work, at home, and in the community. The program is located in the 12 Corners Elementary School in the Brighton Central School District.
I hope you enjoyed this virtual tour. We would invite you to come visit us for part or all of a day and meet some of the students and faculty that make these programs so special.
Thank you, and we did take advantage of that opportunity to visit.
You did.
And we're so grateful to the people who took the time to take us throughout all the facilities and talk about all the good work that goes on there. So it was really, really an amazing day. I know everybody enjoyed it.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on one thing, too. I'm involved with the Four Counties School Board Association right now, is their executive director and the admin that works with me. Her son went through Wayne Finkler Lake's BOSEs, really, of course, one of the other larger part of our management team group. And this young man finished a career in technical and electrician work, and right now, he's retrofitting United States nuclear submarines in Virginia.
Excellent.
So you just, I mean, you just have no idea what, given the opportunity, what these young people can do.
You got it.
Thank you.
We also saw firsthand some of the needs behind driving this capital project.
Certainly.
Not unlike what's happening at Thomas High School with, you know, the technology. They're able to provide so much opportunity and really need the support of this project, so.
We're very appreciative of that, and our buildings, like many are from the 50s and 60s, and they have their needs like all do, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for being here.
You bet. We appreciate the time. Thanks.
All right. Next is visitor speaking time. The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. The public comment section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect individuals' rights. With that being said, is there anyone present wishing to address the Board? Okay, thank you. Moving on, our student liaison reports. Come and join us.
Hello.
How is everyone?
Hi, Hannah. How are you?
I'm amazing. How are you?
Good.
All right, so to start off, we recently got word from the College Board that three students from Schrader, Henry Edmondson, Jensen Lee, and Ani Rud Sharma got a five on their AP Computer Science exam, which this is a really good recognition because they were among 193 students around the world, actually, to earn every single possible point on this exam, so.
Wow.
I'm so proud of them.
Very impressive, yes.
I know, I'm so proud of them. The weekend of March 22nd, Mr. Benz and a bunch of student leaders from our school went to Chicago for a leadership conference with a lot of other people around the country, and they brought back a lot of really brilliant ideas that we're going to be implementing into like our student council and a lot of our clubs at Schrader. Alina Anthus won the Jordan Kelly Memorial Art Competition for grades 6 through 12. The contest was organized by a local nonprofit, Stock the Stigma Register, which they raise awareness for suicide prevention and things like that. They hold a concert every year at the Perrington, I think it's amphitheater, yeah, just to raise awareness. And the award was $250, and it was presented by the Monroe County Executive. On Friday, April 5th, Schrader and Thomas participated in the Sixth Annual Cornell University Programming Competition. The students that participated were Allison Lissandro, Patrick Mason, Alex Valet, or sorry, Lexie Valetchovik, Jensen Lee, Kevin Bates, Jason Brown, and Chloe Wimmet, and they solved a total of 10 problems, which I hear is a lot for this type of competition, and I'm also very proud of them. Last weekend, we finished our production of Bad Seed at Schrader, which did really well. I know Mr. Camino tweeted about it. So yeah, it was great. I saw that, too. And just a little side note, Sean Delaney and I are in the process, along with a lot of other students at Schrader, are in the process of getting nonprofit status for an organization that we've started to raise like awareness for climate change and environmental like progressiveness, things like that, so we're really excited. We're doing a lot of, we're going to be in the Lilac Parade if anyone wants to come out, you know, May 11th, 10:30 a.m. That's going to be great, so, you know.
That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Excellent. Thank you.
So we actually had a somber week at Thomas High School as students, staff, and our community learned that two of our, two members of our community passed away. Owen Knight and our wrestling coaches, Lou Romardo, will be sorely missed in our building. They were both individuals with great personalities and always made you smile whenever you saw them. And I remember Owen, he's, I remember that one, that one thing that I saw where he said, "I want, I want only three letters for my birthday," and he got over 5,000, 5,000 letters. And it's pretty crazy how a school and a community and everybody can come together to support someone like this. And the wrestling coach, I know I've seen a lot of kids showing their support and showing, showing just their love and compassion for a man who taught them so much since they were in, what, 8th grade? And it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing what people can do and come together in these times in need. On another note, on Friday, April 5th, I know you mentioned that earlier about the programming competition and the 10 problems, that's, that's a lot of problems right there. Apparently, it said, "Students solve programming problems about an animal theme consisting of fitting a cat in a box, uncovering a parrot impersonator, determining laser toy recharging capabilities, maximizing playtime, creating a pattern, and sorting a list." The teams solved that in a breeze. And our Odyssey of the Mind team competed at SUNY Binghamton in the state competition. Our team took third and brought a beautiful trophy back to Thomas. And 13 Titans attended the Rock to Change Youth Summit, sponsored by Spencer Port School District, a few weeks ago, and they brought back ideas and are working to continue to enhance our climate of acceptance and celebration within our school environment and student body. And we also have a food cupboard now open at Thomas for any students in need, if they ever just need anything. You can, it's, the door is always open for anybody, no matter how big or small their needs are. They can always stop into Thomas Food Cupboard. And yesterday, the Technology Department and a few students, including myself, visited Labella Architecture and participated in like visions and project visualizations for the future tech wing. And I thought that was pretty cool because they involved the students, and we were able to kind of look at and see what our tech wing might be someday. So that was pretty cool. And this past week, a big thing in sports, we have our softball team played Penfield on Monday night, and they trailed early on, but they rallied late in the game for a 5 to 3 win. And sophomore Sammy Wesley hit her first varsity homerun to tie the game, and Abby Sir hit a solo homerun in the, in the sixth inning. And Kenzie O'Keefe pitched and had six strikeouts. So I thought that was a pretty amazing game. And yeah, that's all we have for Thomas, and I hope you all have a great spring break. Stay safe, stay warm. I have no idea what the weather's going to be. It's going to change tomorrow, who knows? It'll snow, it'll be 90 degrees. Just have both sides, have shorts, have, who knows?
You're right. Thank you both so much. Enjoy the break as well. And liaisons to the Board. Sue, if you'd like to come up and join us.
The one on your left.
This one? Yep.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
I have some highlights from what's going on in classrooms with teachers around the district. Andy Gill, tech teacher at Schrader, received the Golden Apple Award from Channel 8. Our elementary teachers on a special assignment have been working with 2nd through 5th graders across the district with Legos. Kids are computer programming, problem-solving, and collaborating, and they create robots that pollinate plants, transport goods, communicate with animals, and simulate an earthquake. Vicki Curry, a 6th grade literacy teacher at Spry, has created an April yoga challenge along with Adrian Galeno, and every day in April, kids and staff strike a yoga pose and send photos for Google classrooms for the classes of 2023, 24, and 25. Also at Spry, Karen Gillan worked with their student council to raise almost $4,000 for Habitat for Humanity. On May 3rd, the student council will go to a home dedication to see real-life application of where that money is spent. AP Physics students from Schrader designed hands-on lessons and experiments and brought them to 4th grade classes at Plank North, Plank South, and State Road. And also at Plank North, 4th graders are creating a large Wampum belt designed by a Seneca Wampum maker in preparation for visiting author Joe Bruschak. A group of 25 faculty and staff have formed a team that will run the 5K on Mother's Day for the Breast Cancer Coalition of Rochester, and their fundraising goal is $8,000. Two classrooms at Schlegel Road were the 2019 New York State primary and intermediate state champions for Malcolm Mitchell's Read with Malcolm organization, Ms. Wendell's 1st grade class and Mr. Pittman's 3rd grade class. Mr. Mitchell is a retired NFL football player who created his charitable organization to encourage children to read. Malcolm played for New England as a wide receiver, and this was a competition for the entire United States, with each state participating. These two classrooms had the most minutes read for all of New York State. That's a lot. Ann Murky's 5th grade class worked on a long-term independent project, choosing between seven different projects that revolved around immigration. Family Trees, Family Cookbooks, Culture Share, they, one researched a famous immigrant, interview with a family or friend who was an immigrant to the United States, reports on the Statue of Liberty in Ellis Island. Kids had to prepare an oral presentation with their classmates about their project, and in March, they had an evening immigration fair for families to come and see their projects on display. At Plank North, again, librarian Gretchen Pulver borrowed the virtual reality goggles from BOSEs so that students in grades K through 4 could go on a variety of Google Expeditions. Google Expeditions allows students to go on a field trip in the classroom, and Gretchen guided them through a variety of scenes related to a topic, so they were learning and visualizing the content. Kindergartners, or kindergartners explored an ocean safari in the Great Barrier Reef, so I need to get my hands on those. 1st grade did the solar system, 2nd grade did bees and honey production, 3rd grade did loch nests, and 4th grade did animal camouflage. And along those same lines, Megan Peters, 2nd grade class at State Road, used Google Expedition to visit ancient Greece. They also explored inside a beehive, so they were tying into the next-generation science standards. All of State Road's 2nd grade is building and programming Lego bee pollinators, tying to the content of plant and animal interdependence. There's a lot of fun stuff going on around the district.
Thank you for sharing all of the activities and great experiences going on.
I know. Lots of great stuff.
And we got to read a book together.
And we did. We did get to read a book. Thank you for visiting. Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Thank you for being here. Moving on to new board business, we will begin with superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin my report tonight with the wonderful news that our entire One Webster community, for the 14th consecutive time, our district has received the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the, from a National Music Educators Association, and it's for our outstanding commitment to music education. That commitment is a collective one. It's made possible by our outstanding music educators, our talented students, and our community at large that come to countless concerts and performances throughout the year. If you had the pleasure of attending any of our district's recent music in our schools concerts during the month of March, or experienced any of the middle school or high school musicals, it's, it's easy to see how we shine in this area. I want to personally thank our Director of Fine Arts, Michael Roller, our extraordinary staff of music educators for their ongoing leadership and excellent instruction, and all of you who support our music program every year, and thank you for joining with us in the celebration. Speaking of celebrations, you will get to watch Spry Middle Schools musicals in a completely new venue in about 18 months, right, Mr. Freeman?
Just about.
Okay, about 18 to 20 months. Earlier this week, the district broke ground on Spry's new cafeterium. Our district, along with town officials and some very excited Spry 6th graders, and you can see the pictures up there, and joined in the ceremony, the ceremonial groundbreaking just two days ago. The new 20,000-square-foot facility is not only a new auditorium that will be the site of countless concerts and musicals and school-wide gatherings, but it will also serve as a cafeteria that will get daily use by all Spry students. And it was important to have those 6th graders out there because they will be here, they'll be the first ones on first day of school in September of 2020 to, to actually use that cafeteria, to use the cafeteria, so, or the cafeterium. You may remember that this cafeterium was approved by district voters back in December of 2016 and is part of the second phase of that $43.5 million capital project. That capital project has touched all 11 buildings in our district, and the new cafeterium replaces the former auditorium that was built in 1924. And next, a quick reminder for our entire community, your board and district are once again looking for feedback regarding the district's strategic plan. To that end, we're asking students and faculty and staff and community at large to complete our biennial community engagement survey. Information gathered from this survey is invaluable as it guides implementation of new district initiatives and is also used to evaluate ongoing district programs that impact all of us. The online survey only takes about five minutes to complete, and today is the last day. It will be available on our website, websterschools.org, and that ends, oh wait, no. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy spring recess next week, enjoy the time with your family, and see everyone back at school on Tuesday, April 23rd. The Monday after Easter, we have off, and that's different, we haven't really had that before, so Tuesday, April 23rd. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on through new business, we have a resolution for the 2019-2020 budget adoption, and Brian will guide us through that.
Sure. It's been a busy couple weeks since the last workshop. We've had a lot of changes coming from the state, state budget. So we'll just take you through some of those and what's transpired. We'll look at our final budget numbers, some of the budget areas, and really focus on the state aid updates and questions and answers, if anybody has any. So one, budget update. So our total proposed budget for next year is $177,554,272. It is a three, a little over a 3% increase from this current year for $5,237,669. You might notice right away that is less than what we had at the last budget workshop, and I'll get into that in a couple slides of why it went down. Okay, so what has changed since the last workshop? So a couple things to focus in on that have changed. Overall, reduction of $95,000, actually, we had our workers' comp go up in those couple weeks. The consortium finalized our rates in that time, so we had a The consortium finalized our rates in that time, so we had a very small increase of just over $14,000. Then we took salaries going down. So when we did the workshop, we had a, you know, kind of a, I won't say a hundred percent just rollover, look at where we are for staffing. In, in the last three weeks, we've gotten and drilled down into course offerings, especially at the secondary. Nothing's being cut, but just taking a look at all of what we're doing in that area, we're able to kind of sharpen the pencil a little bit for budgetary purposes. So you'll see salaries are down from what we initially presented by about a hundred and, just about $110,000. But that is mainly due to the difference between just rolling everything over and then looking at course requests and what do we truly need for 1920 based on what was going forward. So those were the two really, the only expenditure changes, I guess you could say, for, for the budget piece. So that's why you see the budget going down a little bit from the last workshop. Okay? And then just so you have for reference, those, those areas that we looked at for both workshops, you can see, I just kind of summarized it on this very small and miniscule, probably size eight right now, font for everybody, probably showing up a lot better on your computers in front of you than what is on the screen. And I'd probably need to go see an eye doctor because it's blurry for me right now. But that, just as a comparison to the other two workshops, that you can reference to where those changes were, and you'll see the changes at, on the benefits going up a little bit, still a reduction because the workers' comp went up, and then the salary areas around instruction going down. So that's just a summary for your reference. So really, the meat and potatoes is what did the state do since last we met? Let's go with the changes that are going to impact us next year. So the TRS Reserve, which Mr. Nispec alluded to earlier in his presentation about Bosie's, it allows the establishment of a sub-fund within our ERS Reserve. And so it's not a separate reserve, it's within the current ERS Reserve, could not exceed 2% of teacher salaries from the year before. And the total balance that you can keep is capped at 10% of salaries. So there's a couple restrictions that were passed. Still, technically, the governor has to sign this one into law, but with both houses agreeing to it, I'd imagine he's going to sign this and not veto it. Any questions on that? There's no clarification as of why it's a sub-fund of ERS at this time. So. In child nutrition, there is no longer reduced category. So when he's, everybody's always said free and reduced lunch program, now it's just the free lunch program. Reduced has been eliminated. So anybody that wasn't reduced is now gone to a free.
So it's all or nothing?
It's free or, yeah, paid is, is in essence what it's gone to. So that, that'll have a, a little bit of an impact. It'll actually be an increase in revenue from the state to the food service program. Okay? We were actually doing this already in-house for our students with the sale of the tilapia in the greenhouse. All the profits for that, we're taking our reduced kids and turning them into free already. So.
Excellent.
So that's coming from the state. The tax cap has been made permanent right now with no changes. I know there is a lot of talk around, can we exempt some of the Bosie's capital costs or a couple tweaks here to the pilots on that? But it's been passed and it's permanent with none of the changes moving forward. So as I presented back in February, that's the cap formula going forward with no difference, no changes that we were hoping for. Any questions on the first three areas that are impacting us? Okay. The next one that is going to be interesting, that'll impact, I think, public schools a little bit more uniquely, is employees may take three hours off on Election Day without loss of pay. And how is that structurally going to happen for us with, you know, substitute, substitute shortage? How is that going to be enacted? I wouldn't be surprised if we get some further legislation or further guidance detailing that coming forward. So I know a lot of people have already kind of like, oh, how does that work for us? So, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at that and update the board as, moving forward. Transportation, this is a huge benefit for districts. It will allow us to piggyback bids for contract transportation. With the shortage of drivers that are around the state, there isn't a lot of people, if you want private transportation, like a First Student or a Ridge Road Bus Service or a Bernie Bus, one of those companies, there's, there's not a lot. So when you go to do a bid, you might only get one or two providers showing up. So it's really, in essence, a benefit to the districts to say, okay, one district did it, we're all going to piggyback off that same provider because if we do it, all we're going to do is repeat the same exact process. We're not going to get six or seven providers going. So this will be very helpful. But SED will be issuing guidance on when we can start this. We, as a district, currently have a bid out there for some contract transportation. So we'll be curious to see how this plays out. Bullet Aid is actually something we apply for every year. We've received it from our state legislature representatives before, whether it's the Assembly or the Senate. We've received Bullet Aid. So I just wanted to point out that actually $5 million was allocated to the Assembly/Senate, and which was new this year, the Director of Budget has funds to issue to their constituents. So it might be worth school districts taking a look, and other, other municipalities and not-for-profits that also to see for special projects to apply for, for next year for aid purposes.
So the $5 million is just for schools?
No, it's in general.
In general?
Yes.
Thank you.
But this was the first time I've seen them actually put a dollar figure in the budget that each group has allotted. And then there's one major change that I want to, I'm going to work on this at every presentation I do for the remainder of budget cycle, so people are aware, is the changes to STAR that are happening in this, in this budget. So it's, the way it is now, it's, this is going to encourage people to shift away from the direct bill reduction by two ways. So right now, if you've been in your home for multiple years, you get your tax bill in September, you see the credit, comes right off the bill, pay this. Okay? If you've sold your home recently, you realize you lose that now when you sell your house. So what they're trying to do is get people to move away from that by reducing your income eligibility. So anybody, the threshold was $500,000, now it's $250,000. So that's the first step. The second is, is every year that STAR growth caps at 2%. Well, it's going to cap at zero for people that leave it on their bill. So it's a weight of motive. If you want your 2% year-to-year, you have to get the check, the rebate check now versus having it come directly off your bill. So those, that's a, that's a major change this year in the STAR program that I want everybody to. Okay? Go ahead.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So on, on this point, are we going to be able to provide our community with instructions on how they make that change?
I have not seen those yet. I imagine it'd be similar through the assessor's office like they are now, or online through, right through the New York State website.
Okay, so that'll be an action that people will have to take.
And I'll try to link that to our website, too, with our tax information. But I, you know, we're still pretty early in, in the, in the process from a lot of these laws coming out and changes, so.
So what, do you know what the motivation is behind this?
It's a timing and, it's a timing revenue thing for the state.
Oh, and how they, all right.
And how they account for it.
Whether they expense it or.
Where they, it's a, it's, it's an expenditure reduction versus a revenue decrease.
Right. Okay. My, my next question is on the, the previous page on the employee vote. Now, is that permanent?
Yeah, that was passed into law.
No, but I mean, it's, it's not a, it's just permanent. But I, my understanding was that there was money allocated in the budget to explore extended voting over a period of days.
I'd have to look into that one.
So I believe that there was. So if that came into being, then would this be negated, would be my question at some point?
It's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any questions on the STAR change? Because we'll, I don't think, I, I want to try to get that message out because, so when people are, and when they see the change in September, you know, why didn't my STAR increase? Well, it's because it's capped at zero now because you have it directly off your bill.
Okay.
Okay. So our big number this budget season is, so last time, governor's proposal, what our foundation aid was, was $90,700. So now, our foundation increase with the legislature was up to $231,099. So this is, this was more than we've seen from the legislature in the past couple years. So it was a pleasant surprise. Point eight percent increase, so we're getting there, we're almost to one. But the fun part was, they created 10 different tiers to the foundation aid formula to figure out, you know, which money you'll get for the increases. So we were, you know, obviously the one pattern that repeats, we're, we're still in kind of the lower tier of additional allocation, but more than what we've previously gotten when it comes to foundation aid. Okay? So what's changed state aid by, for the numbers compared to the legislative, to what I'm proposing for 1920? So obviously, we're going to take that foundation aid and be very thankful for it. But nothing has really changed from what I've proposed earlier in the budget process, except one area, and that's around transportation. I've highlighted that for a couple reasons. One is, I was able to confirm with this, with the legislative budget passing, our reimbursement rate will go up next year. So we're going to get more aid solely off of that. So our aid rate is going up about one and a half percent. And that is set in stone now. So that, if we do nothing, will increase our aid for next year. And secondly, because of that, I dug into the formula a little bit more and got into a little bit better projection of what we're going to expense, specifically around our bus purchases and how much aid we'll get back for our bus purchases. So I'm confident we'll see this increase because of the aid and looking at the verification of our bus purchases for next year. So we see an aid bump in that expenditure area compared to what I've presented before. Okay? Everything else has stayed, all those other aid categories stayed the same since the first workshop. Okay. And then our remaining budget process, April 1 has come and gone. State budget was on time and came through with the extra foundation aid. Adoption of the budget tonight. Tomorrow morning, first thing, I will submit our property tax report card because it will, it is legally due tomorrow morning, since we're approving this, this evening. So we'll take care of all the, those state forms tomorrow. And then May 9th is our budget hearing, and May 21st is our budget vote day. Questions on anything?
Anyone? Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the resolution by Dave? And second? Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the budget notice.
Sure. So budget notice is our legal notification. Nothing's changed, you know, in, in the past few years, we've had a lot of changes to these state forms. But nothing has changed with the budget, budget notice this year. It's really just to highlight all the salient points. It's very distracting because it looks a lot like the property tax report card now because both of them are required to have the tax information on there. But it does have the administrative, the program, and the capital component on the budget notice, which we'll expand on in the budget hearing and in our legal budget documents. So not a lot of changes this year to the budget notice. Notice it matches to our adopted budget.
Okay, and can we have a, a motion to accept the budget notice? Linda, and second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on, next item, property tax report card.
Yep. And so the property tax report card did change last year. So this is the second year of a new format. You see it's a lot larger than what it used to be. And that is because we have to report our reserve funds in two ways. With a balance of the end of March, what's, what do we have in our accounts? And what are we projecting to have in our accounts at the end of June? So kind of just a guesstimate moving forward of where we'll think we'll be. And the reasoning and the description of our reserve funds, every district's a little different. We only have these reserve funds. There's about a half dozen more. We do not have those reserve funds. So we're not, we don't report those, we just report the ones that we have. And then to point out, at the top of the property tax report card, row I, if you see zeros, that means we are tax cap compliant. So we have zeros, so we are tax cap compliant when we report our property tax report card. Any questions on that?
Thank you. And may we also have a motion to accept the property tax report card? By Mike, and second by Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And last, for Brian, the treasures report, February 2019.
Sure, I just want to point out one thing on the treasures report. On the first page, you may be wondering why our insurance line, we received almost $140,000 for the month of February. Unfortunately, we did have a bus that was relatively new, that was completely damaged in an accident. So our insurance company reimbursed us the entire cost of it. So that is a very unusual revenue source for us, so I wanted to highlight that because, you know, and all, you know, in the past couple years, we've never had that. So that might stick out, like, oh, why is that a lot larger this month than compared to some previous months? So that's our, just insurance company reimbursing us to replace a bus we, we unfortunately lost.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, may we have a motion to accept the treasures report, please? Moved by Maria, second. Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Moving on to the draft of the 2019, 2020 Board of Education calendar first reading. Had a long break around Christmas. Anything that you want to point out or speak to?
No, I think we basically kept the same type of meeting pattern that we had this year, where you have one regular meeting and one workshop each month. And the month of March, we meet every Thursday for budget, for all the budget workshops.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the first reading of the board calendar, please? Maria's nodding. Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to policy, sexual, sexual and workplace harassment policy, 3120, first reading. And Sue, do you want to speak?
Yes, this, this is a pretty comprehensive policy and certainly goes against our desire to keep our policies brief. This is really a policy and regulation combined into one. We've spent some time on this, reviewing it and working with the attorneys to get it so it, it is relatively easy to follow. The one change that we wanted to recommend, and we're kind of putting you on the spot because we are on camera, but we're, Webster Central School District policy applies to all employees and Board of Education members. We just believe it's really important for us to lead by example. But I know by putting it here and on camera, you really can't say no.
We wouldn't dream of saying no.
But it's something that we can do as a group, or we could do with other groups. You know, there, there's plenty of ways we can structure it, so it's not too inconvenient. But I think it would be time well spent. You have had a time, you have had some time to look at it since the packet was sent out. We feel pretty comf, we, actually, we feel very confident that it's a good policy. And our, and our attorneys will help us, it will help us be compliant and meet the requirements.
Thank you for all the effort that went into this. We appreciate it. This requires action as well. Can we have a motion to accept the sexual workplace harassment policy? So moved by Mike, second by Dave, and all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, I just lost my screen. Did you lose? Wonder what happened? Okay. Yeah, if you just want to go to the next policy.
Moving on, also, policy attendance zone, policy fifty forty, first reading.
Yes, and this is the one we monkeyed around with several times. But we think, we, we're, actually, I'm not gonna say we think, I think, we are confident that we have the wording so that it makes sense and it follows well. So, we were just changing the dates to make sure that they were included at one end and the other, but didn't overlap. So it's really just about the attendance zones and where students go if they happen to move in the middle of the school district, in the middle of the school year. Any questions?
I think we've spent a fair amount of time on this, so-
We did.
Thank you for that, yes.
We probably brought it back to ourselves three or four times. And thank you, Jan, too, who's not here tonight. So Dave and Jan and myself, and Brian, and Dave and Brian over here, we, but it's important that they're right.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the attendance zones policy fifty forty? So moved by Mike. Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to old business, partisan political activity policy forty eighty, second reading.
Yes, this is our second reading, and just to be clear, the reason why we changed this policy is because last year, the night before the election, a communication was sent out via district resources that was factually incorrect. And it was done so, I believe, to sway the vote. And it was a very uncomfortable situation, and we really don't want district resources used in that way. So that's why we put this, this extra wording in here.
Additional wording.
So, as you all know, policy is one of the primary functions of a Board of Education, and we feel very strongly about this. So I do have a question for Mr. Camina, and I would like to know, the, the board sets the policy, and it's your responsibility to make sure it's carried out. So, what would happen this year if this policy was not followed, and somebody used district resources inappropriately?
That's a great question, Sue. We would obviously have to investigate that. We'd probably bring the person in, the staff member, the board member, superintendent, in, and let them know what the policy is, have that, have that discussion. And depending on, depending on the employee's status, also write up a summary and a counseling memo to make sure that, you know, that we could counsel them. It would not be disciplinary, because it's the first offense, but it would, so there'd probably be a counseling memo, because you have to follow that progressive discipline piece.
Well, I understand that, but is there some way that it can be communicated so that it wouldn't appear that they didn't know about it? Communicated ahead of time?
Sure, yep, it certainly can, but even if, again, going back to, you know, even if someone knew about the policy and they still broke it, again, it would still probably be, like, there's not really a huge pound of flesh for that first one, but there has to be, and again, it all depends on how flagrant it was and what was being said in that district resource, and was it, was it factual, was, you know, wasn't it factual, were there things that was, you know, is it borderline slander or libel, those types of things? Because then, that's a totally different discussion, you know, depending on how serious it is.
Okay.
Okay?
Not really, but.
I have a question about that. What about reimbursement?
If they're using, if they're using district, federal, state, or local funds, would that be a cause for asking for reimbursement from the person that-
Yep, it could be. It could be. Again, it's disciplinary, so depending on, you know, depending on, I mean, I can't promise that, that that would be the first step that we would do.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just have to say, it's very disappointing to know that someone would resort to this, to, to communicating untrue information in an inappropriate way to-
Sway an election.
To sway an election, or to sway a vote, any kind of vote.
Yep.
Whether it would be budgetary or election.
I agree.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, may we have a motion, please, to accept the partisan political activity policy forty eighty, second reading? By Maria, and a second? By Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for all your effort.
Oh, you're welcome.
Moving on to board reports. Linda and I were fortunate enough to be able to attend the National School Board Association Conference in Philadelphia and have a little bit to share. We always like to bring back what we've learned and share in a variety of ways. So, to begin with, the keynote speaker on the first day talked about, and he's a worldwide recognized leader on creativity and innovation, and he drew the correlation between art and the expression of art and the audience and that relationship. So, that translates to teacher and student for us in the classroom, and we, he demonstrated a lot of different ways where the importance of this and the value of this and how, how integral it is to learning. The following day, Johnny C. Taylor is the president and CEO of SHRM, and he talked about the correlation between the declining birth rate and the need for human resources that we will likely be facing in years to come, and the importance of soft skills. So, the ability for students and for new, for anyone hired in any capacity would be to creatively solve problems. He said there's, they see a lack of that, they see a lack of incentive and reluctance to take responsibility and be accountable. So he talked about and stressed, we know so many of those things occur in the classroom, but how important it will be for our students entering the world. And following, the next slide, please. So this demonstrates, this is our mission and vision in action, and this is definitely worth sharing with all of you.
Open it. Little Mason is opening a present on Christmas. What's it gonna be? The adorable two-year-old is absolutely bananas for his gift.
I got bananas! I got bananas!
He even remembered his good manners.
What do you say?
Thank you. I got my banana!
I spoke with Mason's dad. Did he react like that with every gift he opened?
He didn't react like that to anything besides a banana.
I got bananas!
Demonstrating the joy of learning. And next, please? Okay, so one of the sessions I attended was about raising the importance of public education and the funding that is so necessary to maintain the programs that we have. So how does that discussion happen, and what are the most effective ways of doing it? So, what we discovered, the role of the conversation was to create awareness, to advocate for the political will to agree to fund public education to the extent it should be, and then, how, how is that sustainable? So it was very interesting, because across the country, of course, there's many different perspectives on, on public education, its funding, and the disparities that we see. So, many of the districts in attendance had a high poverty rate of their student, of their student population, and so it was really very interesting to try to think about and have that dialogue. How do we create sustainable public education funding that is adequate to the needs of our students? Thank you.
One of the one, one of the classes that I went to intrigued me, only because we will most likely be doing this in the near future, it was about an outdoor classroom. It's actually a community, Levittown, which is on Long Island, and it's much like Webster. There's seventy-five hundred students, I believe there were fourteen buildings. What they did was, they turned one of their old middle school or high schools that they no longer use because of declining enrollment. They took the courtyard and they made it, turned it into an outdoor classroom. There's a pond, a greenhouse, they put pavers on so everybody could walk around it. One of the AP bio teachers spends part of her day there, and she touches every student in the district K through four. Next year, it will open up K-12. She meets with them at least one to two times a year, and it all, everything that they, they learn goes along with the standards. They, they meet even in the winter, where they do more STEAM projects. They also have an indoor classroom in the building that they use, but the kids have, have, in the greenhouse, grown herbs and vegetables. They had corn, and the really great thing is, it's year-round. They have retired teachers come in the summer, and they take care of the plants, and, and they also have a couple summer school programs as well. So, it kind of was really cool, because it's much like what we have been talking about through the years. So that was one of the really good ones. The next one I saw was through this company, it's called Empatico.org, and it's teaching empathy to kids. It's a free platform for classrooms around the world to connect through video exchanges. They have more than twelve thousand teachers in forty-seven states and fifty countries that participate. What happens is, teachers sign up, you fill out a questionnaire, and then the company finds you a match. Usually, your matches are about three hundred miles away, and you are able to connect globally with students in other countries, even across our country. There are nine different activities that the classrooms can participate in, so it's not just video chatting, they're actually learning things, doing things together. One of the, the examples that they gave is that there was a classroom, I believe it was in the Midwest, they were interacting with a school in Africa, and they were seeing that a lot of the students weren't in school, and they would say, well, why isn't so-and-so here? And they would say, oh, he's very sick. Well, they found out that the kids had cholera because their water was contaminated, so they, the kids in the, the US raised funds, they, they had fundraisers, and they were able to send over a water filtration system for these kids, so, and then they videoed showing the water filtration go in, so they, they saw the fruits of their labor over here, which was awesome. There was also another class that connected with another, another, off in the Far East somewhere, I'm not quite sure where it was, but the kids saw that there was a drought, and they, they didn't have fresh vegetables, so the kids here said, well, we use hydroponics, and it's very simple to do, it uses ninety percent of the water that you would need for normal farming. So they taught the kids how to, how to do hydroponics, and they had fresh vegetables. So, it was really cool, and it's all based on the question that how do we create socially concept, socially conscious problem solvers, and teaching our kids that piece of it. So, that was one. It is free, I think you should look into it, Brian. It was very cool. Just saying. And the last one I saw, this was probably the most powerful class that I went to, it was called Addressing Mental Health in Our Schools. It was a, it was all around suicide and the stress and anxiety of our students today, but the part that made it so awesome is, there was a student in the audience who was a board rep that was there representing his Board of Education, and he put his hand up and he said, I am so stressed out. I am, I think he was a junior, I take four AP classes, I have, I, I play an instrument, I'm in music, I, I play sports, and I have homework, and I never can get to bed before two and three in the morning. So the whole conversation shifted towards this student who has all this stress, and there was a woman sitting behind him who stood up and said, well, you need to, you need to realize that in today's society, in order to be in college, that's what's gonna happen. You're gonna have to stay up all night, you're gonna have to learn to manage this. And the, and he said to her, with all due respect, ma'am, I'm sixteen years old, I spend seven hours a day in class, when I go to college, I'll be an adult, and I'll only have to be in class three hours a day, and that's the only thing I'm gonna be required to, to do, is study and pass those tests, not all this other stuff. And it was, it was very powerful to listen to a student, so it, it rings true, there's a, these kids are under so much stress today, and we have to, we have to be aware of it, that it's so different than what we were doing when we were in high school. So it was, it was amazing. Yeah, no, the entire weekend, we saw, probably, we divide and conquer, so we, we try to see as many programs as we can, so we probably each saw about five or six with the keynote speakers. It's, it's an amazing trip. We learn so much.
We do, we definitely do. And some of the focus, the sessions I chose were around social emotional learning, because that ties into the entire approach that we take and think about when we, when we talk about mental health. Significant seventy-two is a website, it's free, and all these teachers were sharing different experiences of things that go on in their classroom. It's really tremendous. So there's a whole lot of research around seventy-two and the significance of that number and how they break it out. For example, the first seventy-two hours of their school year, or anyone who participates in this, is just around team building, just around getting to know each other. So, it's, it's also free. There are a whole lot of great and easy tips for anybody interested, and their, their whole premise is around reducing stress so that kids are be, better able to learn. It was really very informative. Thank you, next one? Are we ju, okay. So we found our friends in Penfield. Tom Putnam was there with, with his, two members of his Board of Education. So in closing, I think we just want to say thank you. It's a tremendous opportunity, we always take away a lot. The conversations that are had with other board members is very informative in learning about the challenges and, and successes of other districts across the county, across the country. Sorry, so, yeah, it was wonderful.
Want to, yeah, let me? No.
Okay.
Thank you for letting, for allowing us the opportunity.
For letting us go.
For letting us go. Thanks, Dad.
Okay, and moving on. Let me see here. To our school liaison reports. Should we start over with you, Maria? Thanks.
Students at DeWitt that are in Club Impact have been hard at work making their quotes, jokes, and puns books for local shelters, hospitals, and elder care facilities. PBIS student leaders are posting reminders of care in the hallways and showing care in the halls, which is the focus for the month of April. DeWitt Road students also shared their thoughts and ideas about design options for the DeWitt Road Library with LaBella, who will be reviewing the student suggestions for consideration. The Beat Brain Cancer Walk Run is going to be held at DeWitt on June eighth in honor of a third-grade DeWitt Road student that is suffering from brain cancer. Author Sarah Weeks will be visiting DeWitt on May twenty-first, and DeWitt's Literacy Night and Social, an ice cream social will take place on Wednesday, May fifteenth. The literacy segment will be held from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM, and the ice cream social will be held from seven-thirty to eight-thirty. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May thirteenth, in the DeWitt Library at six-thirty PM. And I do have just a couple of things for Willink. Listening Post is gonna be starting up again. The dates are April twenty-third, thirtieth, and thirtieth, May seventh and fourteenth, and that's when retired teachers or anyone from the community can go in and do something with the kids during lunch. Ball in the House is a PBIS assembly, will be, be at Willink tomorrow. There are two segments, or two shows, one's at eight and one is at nine. And the next meeting is going to be held at May twenty-eighth in the Webster Public Library at six-thirty. And that's it.
Thank you. Dave?
Due to illness, I did not make, I was not able to make the Clem Road, Clem North meeting, but I did attend the Thomas PTSA meeting on March 20th. We talked a lot about the Ball in the House, which is gonna be at Willink, that was at Thomas on February 6th. They're extremely happy with the, the presentation. They also have something called cocoa and kindness. It was on Valentine's Day, is used as a way to connect kids, you know, connect with kids in a positive way. They serve between 600 and 700 cups of cocoa. They talked about, at, at that time, the upcoming spring musical Cinderella, which we all saw, it was phenomenal, and they spoke about Community Arts Day, and then some on the spring apparel sale that they're working on.
Thank you. Sue, do you have anything to share?
Yes, the Schlegel, PTSA is sponsoring a poetry night on April 26th, it's a Friday night, 5:30 to 7:30, and they'll be having a visiting author named Amy Vanderwater. Their next... Is she good? Good.
She's really good.
And Tuesday, May 14th, is their next PTSA meeting. I also went to the Clem South meeting, and they're having a Mother's Day, Mother's Day plant sale on Febu, uh, excuse me, February, sure. Friday, May 10th, they're preparing, the PTSA is preparing for the Teacher Appreciation Week and for the end, end of the year teacher luncheon. And they also were expressing concern about the building use after hours. You know, there was some communications and it was a little bit sketchy, so I'm just not sure that the parents really, or the parents in the PTSA really understand any changes that might be happening due to the Wonder Care program. So I think some communication, you know, to all the parents about that would be good. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. From State Road, I wasn't able to be at Tuesday's meeting, but I know they have a Leo's Pie fundraiser going on and picking up their pies, April 11th. The carnival, State Road Carnival is April 26th, and there is no meeting in May, however, there are a lot of different activities going on.
Yep, I was at Plank South meeting last night, the fifth grade reps were there. They spoke about being at a meeting with the architects to discuss the libraries. They said that was awesome. They were so excited to give their feedback and they're looking forward to coming back to the schools when the libraries are complete to see their thumbprint and the decisions. So it was really, it was a great, great discussion that they had. They have a spring dance that was held last Friday, it was a huge success, over 350 people were in tenden, in attendance, they had DJs, dancing, refreshments, and games. The Ice Cream Social is on May 3rd, that is their biggest event of the season. May 4th and 5th is the school play, so that's exciting, and Jen and Scott will be spending the day on the roof. Apparently, they challenged the students to try to save 600 lives through the Healthy Heart Challenge, and the kids rose to the occasion by saving over 800 lives. So Scott and Jen will be up on the roof, they said that they will check the weather report before they get up there. It's exciting. And I was also at Spry's meeting last night. They are going to have a fifth grade open house on April 30th. This is for all incoming sixth graders and their families to visit the building. They will be participating in a scavenger hunt, which will allow them to meet staff and purchase their Spry swag. The eighth grade luau is on Friday, May 30th, and the yoga challenge is going on, which you heard, and I believe there's a picture floating out there on social media of some mindful yoga poses of you guys.
Do I do?
Yeah, I saw it. I will share after.
Denial. Outright denial.
We saw it. I will pass it to other board members.
How you did it?
They did do it. It's on the website. Lunch break, which is formerly known as the Listening Post, will take place April 23rd, April 30th, May 14th, and 21st. And the Builders Club is wrapping up a fundraiser for Joyful Rescue Animal Shelters. They have a list of items that they were looking for, and the homeroom that brings in the most donations will win a free breakfast. I also did not get a chance to do Schrader's, theirs was a virtual meeting, it was on the 21st, and we, we had a meeting that evening, but I will say, I saw a bad seed and we have some pretty incredible actors in our, in our midst. And then Tammy and I were at the, the Central PTSA meeting. They are kind of winding down, really, they're looking for some new leadership. They may have a couple people in the works, but they're, they're kind of buttoning that up. They're looking for calendar sponsors, and they're also completing the swag, which is the students with an attitude of gratitude, and that's where students fifth through 12th grade can go online and nominate a teacher and give them some kudos for something that they feel was awesome and, and helped them through, so that is nice.
Also, along the lines of Central PTSA, we had a table at Community Arts Day this year and decided, we thought it would be fun to ask kids what a board of education is and what do you think they do? So we got a lot of blank stares.
Board.
Board. However, one student really, you know, he thought about it and he said, "I think they just come up with good ideas for schools." And we said, "You win." So it was real, it was a day well spent, and thanks to everybody who manned our table together and just enjoyed the talents and, and just being connected to the community. And, okay, and so moving on to Monroe, Monroe County School Board Association, Jan is not here for the Legislative Committee, however, she did share a report with me about appointments that have been made, so I'll forward that to everyone and Cindy too as well, so you can share it. Labor Relations?
Labor Relations, we had the RASH2 Plan update, and so the good news is, is that became self-funded January 2018 and is now run by a Board of Directors consisting of one representative from each district, six union members, and a consultant from Arthur Gallagher and Company. Exelus remains as the plan's administrator. They reviewed the offerings and costs for the coming year, enrollment trends, and the history of the plan's performance compared to the community's offerings. It was also noted that the plan's performance for 2018 was positive, lower administrative costs because of being self-funded were the contributing factor.
Excellent, thank you. For information exchange, Dr. Dina Swanson presented this past Wednesday on Race is an Ace, Adverse Childhood Experience, and made a pretty solid case for it, but it was a very interesting discussion to talk about mortality rates, infant mortality rates, and the challenges that face African Americans despite being in equal income brackets and in, in equal professional careers as well. So that was very well received. And I don't have an executive committee report, do you want to? Okay. And then moving on to district committees, Audit Committee is all set right now, policy we did hear from, Budget Advisory. Thank you to all the community members also who participate and, and attend all those meetings, it's very important. And Strategic Planning, we want to turn to Sue.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate what Carm said, you know, we've been administering the, administering the survey to staff, students, and community, community members. The final, final evening is tonight, or is it through tomorrow? Are you sure it's done through tomorrow? Or is it done tonight?
I think it's done tonight.
Okay. And this is the fifth time we've administered this survey. The, the core team will be meeting May 2nd to start reviewing the data and putting that together. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of, a lot of results and a lot of good results. And the district will be, or the board and the district, when we set our goals, will be using the information generated from the survey results to make decisions going forward.
Excellent. And we just recently added WEN, Webster Health and Education Network, to this agenda because Linda attends the meetings monthly and has for quite a long time, and we thought it's important to make that connection between the work that they do, and it certainly influences the work in the district.
So there was a WEN meeting, they meet once on the second Wednesday of each month, so there wasn't one this week because WEN is currently completing a grant application. The grant is through the Drug-Free Community Support Programs. If the grant is secured, they would be eligible to receive $125,000 a year for five years. The requirements are that the coalition address youth substance use. So they identified two drugs, which would be alcohol and tobacco, which is, they encompass vaping because of it being such an epidemic for our youth, and they're diligently working to complete it. The deadline is coming up in the next couple weeks. They also continue to do Narcan trainings, they've done several through the winter, they will add more dates as that comes up, comes up, comes up in the next couple months. They're also looking to secure a date for a drug takeback. Again, the previous two have netted more than 1,300 pounds of drugs, which is a most in, in Western New York, so it's pretty incredible that we've gotten so mu, so much of those drugs off of, off of the streets. They also co-sponsored the Perfectionism Forum with the PTSA, and they are looking to set up a hidden in plain sight room for parents to view. That's where they set up a bedroom of a teenager and they show you drug paraphernalia that your kids may have that we don't even realize are in their rooms, so they'll be doing it. I know Penfield had one recently, so it's a pretty powerful, powerful program, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, everyone's had a chance to review all the documents contained therein. Can we have a motion, please, to approve the items in the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mike and second by Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, thank you. And with that, that concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you for being here and attendance and for your participation. Have a good night.